All right, at this time, we're going to call to order the work session of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, April the 27th, 2021, at 6 o'clock PM at the Justice Center in Carinsel, Georgia. And we're using microphones tonight, so hopefully everybody can hear better, but we've never used these before. So we apologize in advance if they don't help. Hopefully, they do. We want to welcome everyone and thank you for joining us tonight. We note for the record, we have a quorum of three commissioners present for tonight's meeting. Commissioner Ryan Swells had to be out of town for a work-related issue. He's receiving an award and couldn't come tonight. And then Commissioner Franklin is out of the state, celebrating his 53rd wedding anniversary. So we want to congratulate him and his wife, even though they're not here. And we hope that they and Commissioner Swells have safe travels home. This time, we're going to have an invocation, and then we'll follow that with a pledge. So we're going to ask everybody to stand, and please remain standing after the invocation and join us in the pledge. Just back your heads. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity to be here tonight in this great county that we live in. And we're just thankful that we can come together like this and discuss the issues that our county faces. Help us or grant us wisdom, God, to make the best choices for all the people that we represent. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we get started tonight, we need to dispose of some housekeeping for this meeting. Tonight, we have three commissioners, which is a quorum. And that's what we have to have at least three out of five for a meeting. It was unfortunate that the other two couldn't be here tonight, but unavoidable. The chairperson can vote in any issue, but our normal practice is the chairperson does not vote except to break a tie. However, our code requires that any measure that passes has to have at least three votes. So tonight, I'm going to dispose of that normal practice and vote only because we'll be dealing with procedural issues like approving the agenda. We are not voting on any issues tonight, just things like approving the agenda and adjourning the meeting. So just want to clarify that. At this time, we need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster, second to the motion. All in favor of the motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion will carry three to zero, and the agenda is approved. This time, we're going to open the meeting for public comment. During this portion of the meeting, any citizen or member of the public can speak on any topic of concern that you have to the board. Because the board may not be able to prepare for questions and topics ahead of time in this manner, this is primarily a comment section. If you have questions the board cannot answer tonight, or that time doesn't permit, we're going to ask you to write those down with your contact information, give them to the clerk, Ms. Finger, and someone will contact you in a few days and try to answer any remaining questions that you have. Please understand, the board will not be able to engage in any discussion about any pending planning and zoning issues. It's important that all planning and zoning items be handled during the specific meetings that have been set aside for those issues. And that's so that all the applicants and petitioners can be present and have the right to due process during that time. So you can speak about planning and zoning issues that are pending before the board, we just can't respond to that. When you come to the podium, please give the clerk your name and address before you begin. In order to facilitate the meeting and give everyone here an opportunity to speak who wishes to speak, each person must limit their comments to five minutes or less. Each person may speak once, and you cannot yield your unused time to anyone else. The clerk has a timer with a display. She'll set that for five minutes so that you can look over and always know how much time you have left so that you can adjust your remarks. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of decorum as the commissioners. And that means that you're civil, that you are respectful, and that you avoid any personal attacks. All comments must be addressed to the chair and the board. And members of the public may not interrupt or make additional comments while someone is speaking. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor. Does anyone want to come up to the podium and make a public comment? Come up. If you'll start, Tim, give your name and address to the chairman.
Okay, Kim Harris, 400 Lake Shore Road, Martin, Georgia, which is Gumlog.
Okay, right.
Got that? Okay.
Yes.
I just want to comment and make a statement that I am against incorporating or making Gumlog into a city.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Anyone else? Ms. Whitworth, come on up.
Ms. Whitworth, 833 Poplar Springs Road, La Boney, Georgia. That's Gumlog also. Thank you, Manager Turner, Chairman Mecklenon, and members of the board, allow me to speak. I've been in Gumlog for over 50 years, and I was a former commissioner 20-plus years ago. I am not in favor of incorporating Gumlog. Again, I state, I am not in favor of incorporating Gumlog. The majority of the people that live in Gumlog is on a fixed income. You look at the biggest portion of our people here, they're on fixed income. They do not get a pay raise every year, and they cannot continue to pay higher taxes every year that comes. I mean, we are making them not richer, we're making them poorer by continuing to do this. And if Gumlog incorporates, our taxes is going to go through the roof because we haven't got nothing over there. We haven't got nothing to offer. We've got, right now, we got garbage pickup. We can negotiate our own price with anybody we want to for garbage pickup. We've got water from the city of La Boney. We've got law enforcement help from the Sheriff's Department here in Franklin County. We've got ambulance service. And we've got a hospital over there, which we have to pay taxes on also because the people wasn't told the right truth on it. But to pay higher taxes and to charge the people in Gumlog higher taxes, as far as I'm concerned, is not feasible. And, you know, I understand, and it was like this when I was there, that we had to have a feasibility study. That's probably going to cost a minimum of $50,000 that these taxpayers are going to have to pay. And I think that's foolish. If you hadn't got any money now, where are you going to come up with the money to pay for it? And we got five municipalities in the county. Why do we need another municipality? I have a farm in Gumlog. I have cows, and I have lawns. And I lived in Gumlog because it was a rural country. I've always lived in Franklin County. I was born and reared in Franklin County. And I would like the forest to stay as rural as possible as long as it can. I realize that we need housing, but we've got areas that we can do housing in. Now, Jason, I'm gonna put this to you. You're gonna have to, Gumlog incorporates, you're gonna have to come and help me train my animals where to poop their ass. Because, you know, they, right now, they can go wherever they want to go. But if we get in the city, you can't have tail what might happen.
You're gonna need some big garbage bags.
And you, are you gonna help follow?
I'm an expert poop scooper, first and foremost.
But I just feel like that incorporating Gumlog does not make good sense whatsoever. Just because we might can get more grants, more money for roads or whatever, that don't warrant all these people right here that's on limited income to come and pay higher taxes. There's other issues that I'd rather address with you that needs to be done, that I can think about. Of course, Jason mentioned the land use, but the IBA board, we need to look at that very closely. And why do we need to add another city to have another mayor on that thing? But I want to thank you for letting me speak. But again, I hope I speak for the majority of the people here. That Gumlog does not be incorporated. If we wanted to live in the city, we would have moved to the city from the get-go.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Whitworth. Who would, come on up. Again, if you'll give her, the clerk, your name and address.
HRLA, 496 Skyline Way, Gumlog, La Boney. You guys, any of you guys live in Gumlog?
I live close, not quite there.
Okay, that doesn't work. So do you have knowledge of the Georgia Code being revised beyond 2019?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The Georgia Code, the band dates and tells us what we need to do when it comes to incorporating the city, okay? The last provision I found was 2019, Title 36, Chapter 31. We can't be an incorporated city. We just can't. What's the current population of Gumlog?
It's 20, it's over 2,200, yes, so somewhere in that neighborhood.
What's the graphic size, the geographic size of Gumlog?
That's a good question. The Gumlog designated census place is 16.2 square miles. So if you divide that out, the population density for that entire area is less than 200. And you have, yeah, and you have to have 200 square feet, I'm sorry, 200 people per square mile. So you're right, that whole area cannot, and there are no cities that are that size.
According to population growth since 2000, we have to, 100 times more growth than we've had the last 20 years to get anything near 200 per acre.
Right. That's true.
So why are we spending the board's time on this?
The other issue is when you incorporate, and I want to bring this out, you, 60%, the land, the area that has to be laid out, at least 60%, I think, has to be tracts five acres or less. So if there was a drive to incorporate it, I mean, it would have to be citizen-led. The citizens of Gumlog have to do that. It would have to be a much smaller area within Gumlog that was densely populated. It couldn't be the whole area.
So grab the people on the lake.
It had to be in that area.
Grab the people on the lake.
Wherever the dense, wherever the densely populated areas are.
What you're trying to do right here is completely inequitable for the people that live on the lake. And I hate that. I hate that I live on the lake and have to come here and tell you that the 16.87 acres, or 16.87 square miles of Gumlog isn't populated anything near what the county or the state needs it to be. The 200 people per square mile ain't gonna happen for 50 years, or at least, we hope not. That's why we're moved to here, right?
And that, if there wasn't an area that could be carved out for that, then it couldn't happen. You're right.
The 60% of less than five acre tracts, I don't have that data. I couldn't find it. I'm gonna tell you, with all these huge landowners in here, it's not 60% less than five acres. So why are we having this discussion?
Yeah, it couldn't, I don't see how it could incorporate farms because it's too big of a land.
That's Gumlog. That's a selected, that's a selected.
The area that you choose to incorporate, I don't think it would.
So you're selectively eliminating a portion of Gumlog to make it meet state criteria?
It would depend, I mean, on the people who pursue that.
Well, that's kind of black and white, isn't it? We've got 16 acres with, what, 120 people per, or 16, 16 square miles with 1.20 or something.
Somewhere in there, part of that is, I don't know if they would consider the part that's water. I think there are two or three square miles in that 16 that are water, but that's still, if you did, I calculated it up.
The average of 200 people.
Yeah, it would still be less. I think, I think the highest came out to 176. So for that whole area, you couldn't.
Mr. Chair, is that what you want? Why are we having this discussion?
Yeah.
Seriously.
That's something that Gumlog has to think about.
I don't know if I can make a move, but let's shut this down. We're not going to incorporate Gumlog for the next 50 years. Unless you guys find a way to squeeze down the 500,000 people in the community out there and get a lot of people to live in, this isn't gonna work.
And I want to clarify, and the county can't incorporate Gumlog. That has to be a citizen-led effort.
Top question, why are we here?
Well, I'll speak to that. I don't want to eat into your remaining time.
I'm done. I'm just, I'm trying to be.
Okay, all right.
I didn't bring the paper. I forgot what I can't say.
Yeah. I got you. The reason I, the reason I brought up this idea, this was my idea. I've been the commissioner for that district for four years prior to this year, and all the complaints I got were from Gumlog. So it was bad roads, it was bad neighborhoods, so zoning issues. I mean, it was one after another. I didn't get heard any calls from anywhere else, but it was all concentrated right there in Gumlog. So to my mind, I was thinking, how can we answer all these problems? A lot of the issues are roads, and the county, hang on, the county doesn't, the county just doesn't have the money to go over there and pave all those roads. So from my standpoint, if you are a city and you incorporate, and you can figure out, if you can work out the population, you immediately become eligible for state and federal funding that you couldn't bring into that area otherwise. And so that might be a way to address some of those issues. So to my mind, it's worth asking the question. It may be that the people of Gumlog don't want that, and that's fine, because the county can't do it. I think it's worth asking the question and exploring the option.
Well, I don't know anybody in Gumlog who's personally fretting over the services we don't get. So I suspect you're kind of marking up the wrong tree there.
Well, I got quite a few complaints. I mean, I agree, a lot don't, but there are just as many probably that do.
If my five minutes is still open, when you.
I don't, how many minutes does he have?
We got one minute left.
Okay, one minute.
She changed some of them.
No, that's count, question that counts, but sorry. Go ahead.
As you get police departments, roads, sewers, whatever, is that because Gumlog needs it more than the rest of the county, or because the rest of the county doesn't care?
There are a lot of problems that Gumlog has that you probably not going to necessarily find in other areas of the county because of the way Gumlog came about. Gumlog, before the lake was there, that was all farming community. Well, then you had, then you had the lake formed, and there was a rush by people, both in the county and outside, to build houses on the lake. And that put them in direct conflict with people who've owned property there and farmed for years. I had a lady one time who called, and she said, "Why is there a chicken house that's allowed to build right down the road from me and stink that road up? From my nice house?" Now, she had moved into this area from outside. And I tried to explain to her, "The real question is, why were you able to build your nice house next to the chicken house? Because that farm has been there forever." And originally, there was not zoning until 2005, so, I'll give you some more time, until 2005. And so there's just been a lot of conflict between residential areas that are pretty dense and some areas that are slap-up next to farms, where people have farmed for their entire life. So that creates some unique problems because of that lake that maybe are not in other areas of the county. But then again, some of them are, maybe it's not to that scale.
And I know my time's up, but I feel like I have to rebut what you said.
Go ahead.
If you move next to a chicken farm and build a house, you shouldn't even take that call.
Well, I have to take a call. I have to ask, I have to talk to them.
The chicken farm moves over to where I built my house last year, then I have a right to call somebody.
Yeah, people always have a right to ask questions. You have to, you have to, you have to listen to them.
It's a legitimate question that dictates how you respond.
Well, you have to, you just have to try to explain.
You're exactly right. Real quick on that, then you hang up the phone.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
At some point in time, they're not gonna reelect you if you don't get them what they want anyway. That's not their point.
Oh, maybe.
My question, real quickly, and I'd like to jump back to it, does Gumlog need more help, police, sewer?
Some areas of it do need a lot of help.
Do they need more help than the majority of the county?
Some areas do.
Is it because we need it, or is it because the rest of the county doesn't really care? They accept.
Some areas need it. Some areas do need it.
I'm not getting a good answer, am I?
Well, not, maybe not what you want to hear, but that's the right answer.
If you guys aren't spending a legitimate tax dollar in Gumlog, we are Franklin County taxpayers.
You are, that's right.
You guys are not keeping our neighborhoods up like every other neighborhood that is unincorporated in Franklin County. Maybe we need to take a hard look at the budget.
Well, that's true, but from a larger perspective, you know, the tax mileage rate, when we collect taxes, we collect it from the entire county, and we can't say, "Well, these tax dollars came from Gumlog, so we can only spend them in Gumlog." We have to spread that out. And our tax mileage rate varies from 10 to 11 and a half. And so we have to use that as best we can. Money only goes so far.
It says now you can use to go up.
It does, that's right.
You guys are raising my taxes whether you change the millage rate or not.
Last year, we actually lowered your taxes for the first time in years.
You lowered the millage rate.
That's right. We lowered your taxes.
My valuation went up a little.
Yeah, but that's because your property value went up.
That's not realistic, Jason.
It is. I mean, property taxes.
We lowered your taxes our way. We're gonna raise your property taxes, or you raise your valuation 15%. After one tax, there's a simple formula.
That's a common argument. Everybody who owns property feels that.
Everybody on your side of that bench offers your arguments, and the people on my side, so much, I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. You can come on up, of course. Come on up, and just remember, give your name and address to Ms. Finger before you start.
My name's Steve Forson. I live 244 Skyline Way in Gumlog, Georgia. I want to make emphatically known, I am totally against any even consideration of incorporating our little community. Now, I want to address some of the things that you just talked about, why we need more of everything. Well, I can start by telling you, I began to be a little encouraged with our county when we hired Matt Haley. You know why? Because he got off his fanny like prior marshal did not do, and he came out and addressed some problems. Gentlemen, if you were driving around Gumlog, and I'd be letting ride with you and help you hold your head up because you're gonna want to throw up at the deserted properties that are out there, that's not helping the tax rate. You could be getting a lot more tax income if you let, you get those people that'll let trailers ride down. Make them move them away. If they can't move them away, you move them away and levy against them, make them pay for it. I mean, it's gotten to be pathetic. You drive through Brittany Harbor or any of those, any of those, well, Gumlog Creek back there, it makes me sick in my stomach. You talk about tenure? Kyle, I was probably in that Gumlog Creek when I was four years old, my grandpa. Don't you tell me about who's been here the longest or the victim or the best. We want our community to improve, not be taken away from. So I would make this suggestion.
Okay.
Find another marshal like Matt and get him some help, because that's why you lost Matt. Worked him to death. He couldn't have any home life. That's not right. Hire you a marshal, get him two deputies. Hell, I'll work with them for free. It's about our community, and we want help. Now, you know, if you get beyond that, just a couple of comments, and I'll sit down, because I can tell y'all love me. I don't understand, well, we got these signs all over the highway. If you're caught littering, it'll cost you $250. Well, hell, you only catch a bunch of people. Just come out there and park when any of the garbage pickup services that have open trucks are picking up. Terry and I, I know Terry and I both have reported it. I was behind the Ford truck. Terry, you got behind the Dodge. He apparently had picked up some trash. It had a couple of rings of typing paper in it. Guess where they ended up? All over 328. Where are you all? I've got one of that, I've got neighbors right back here, between them and me. We spend our time picking up trash, other people's trash, and I think it's a darn disgrace. Shouldn't be, and we can do something about it. You pop a couple of them, or how about putting a restriction on the garbage pickup services? Got to have closed trucks, boys. Business, you're out of business unless you comply. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, and I know this is not the time or the place for it, but I'm gonna tell you anyway. Have you ever taken a drive from Charlotte, North Carolina to Raleigh?
I haven't.
I didn't think so. I used to do that three times a month. I'm in the software business, so I would go up there. And, you know, there used to be a place up there called Tobacco Road. But it's not Tobacco Road anymore. You know what it is now? It's Chicken Gut and Hot Gut Road. It looks like the surface of the moon because rendering plants came in there and destroyed, destroyed completely the ecology. You don't see any green plants growing. It's just all, whatever they call it. It ain't Georgia red dirt, I can tell you. But I would have to ask a question, and then I'll leave you with it. Why in the world, why would you ever even consider it? And why would you let them get by with slipping that application in on the same day that y'all were gonna put a moratorium on development? Guys, come on. These people out here aren't stupid. And another thing, I don't know what it is about the IBA that makes it so special. They like the CIA. They must do, because none of y'all know anything about it. And I want to know how they got a half a million dollars in an operating checking account. Because, see, that's my business. I'm in the fraud business. I'd like to know where that money came from, but greater than that, I'd like to know what it's going to be used for. So with that, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Ms. Forson. Anyone else? Hang on, somebody's coming up behind. I'm sorry. Come on up. Again, if you'll tell the clerk your name and address.
I'm Larry Brown, 211 Mountain View Drive, La Boney, Georgia, Gumlog. Once again, I kind of echo the gentleman that just talked. Who came up with the idea that we're going to incorporate Gumlog? We need to take care of the parts of the county right now on 328. Have you been down 328? Do you see the trash that's in these people's yards?
I see the trash everywhere.
I mean, it's terrible. This county, 328, was a rule to get the people to clean up their own yards. This is terrible. I've never seen anything like it. Anyway, let's go back to you wanting to raise my taxes by incorporating Gumlog. I don't need any more taxes. If you paid the tax that I paid on a little bit of land that I got on my income, you wouldn't be a happy camper. And the roads, well, I'm gonna talk about that next week. But anyway, the roads in Gumlog are absolutely terrible. You and I had the conversation back in September before COVID and all that got started. Well, starting next month, or the fourth, I think, Monday, I'll be back. And I'm gonna be back and back and back. I'm not going away. Somebody is gonna do something with the roads in Gumlog. But this incorporating Gumlog, bad idea. Larry Brown, totally against it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
David Smith, 16 Chestnut Street. Another gentleman, a couple gentlemen back.
David, I'm sorry, she didn't hear you.
16 Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
You stated that it had to be a group of citizens come forward to do this, incorporate. I'm against it. But, so would they have to be here tonight?
No, no, we just asked the question, and we did a kind of an informal survey to see what kind of interest there might be in it. But the county can't incorporate Gumlog. That would require a citizens group dedicated to that, who would work with a state representative to figure out where exactly Gumlog would be, who would be in it, and work out all the details. So, no, we don't, the county can't incorporate Gumlog. We're not going to. We don't have the authority to. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, sure.
269 Gumlog Road, Road, La Boney. I have lived in Gumlog all my life. I was born and raised there, and I just wanted to go on the record as I'm against it.
Okay.
Gumlog needs to stay Gumlog, not incorporated, and Kyle, we expected you to help us. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, you. You can come on up.
Anthony Rollins, 285 Cedar Point Road, Martin, Gumlog, Georgia. Commissioners.
Hang on a second. Did you get everything? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Commissioners, Gumlog is a very diverse region. It might only be 16 square miles. You have lake houses, some of them millions of dollars. You have trailers. Might only be $5,000. Gumlog does not need, does not want to be incorporated. For the most part, most of these people, we just want to be left alone like we've been. Yes, we want our county to help us and take care of us, provide us with our law enforcement like they have, which we pay for. We'd like our roads taken care of by the taxes that we pay for, but we don't want to be taxed more. And I, for one, damn sure, do not want another form of government to answer to you. That's what I have you guys for. That's why we come here. That's why we have these meetings. I don't need another city council trying to tell me what I can and what I cannot do. I'm a truck driver. I park my truck at my house. They incorporate, there goes my truck parking. I can't park my truck at my house no more. Somebody's gonna say, "Can't have that there. It's too big of a view." I own 14 acres in this county. I am not on the lake. I'm a half mile to three quarters of a mile away from the lake, down a dirt road, a one-lane dirt road that I enjoy. Don't want it paved. If I did, I would have moved to the city. I'd live in a city. I like living in the country. Where I get left alone, just like all the rest of these people want to be left alone. Now, some people here were complaining about the garbage. Yes, there is garbage down 328 from the little pickup trucks that pick up some people's garbage. Not every one of us use those services. Some of us actually have garbage trucks, big garbage trucks, that come and pick up our garbage. So crack down on the little pickup trucks. Make them buy the right trucks. Not all of us, but not all of us have millions of dollars laying around either. So for me, I would like to know, who brought this forward?
I did.
Okay, you did. I would like to know, when are we gonna give Eevee some help back there? So he can get out there and start going after the meth heads and all the other problems that are out that area that so-called the rest of the county doesn't have?
We're trying to work on that.
I mean, those are the things that need to be addressed. We don't need to be incorporated for that. And that's my thoughts. I am totally against it.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Anyone else?
Lois Bradley, Gumlock Road, La Bona, Georgia. And Jess, I'm gonna tell you, for me and my family, we oppose aboneness corporation.
All right, thank you, thank you, Cory.
Swain London, I live at 430 Blueberry Lane, but I also own a poultry farm on Lake Shore, 86 Lake Shore Road, Martin, Georgia, all over Gumlock. Appreciate your time. Kinda interesting. The only thing really I've heard is about poultry related. I own a poultry farm. I've had it 20 some odd years. It is agriculture is my total income. I realize that we have to have a little bigger parcel of land to operate cattle, chicken houses. I know there's complaints against us, the smell that people with a million dollar home don't appreciate. We do the very best we can. We have very strict standards that we comply with. You cannot come on my farm unless you're cleaner than you would be in a hospital, just for the fact. But there is issues and I always will be. But I realize that the bulk of the people around where I'm at own, what, a half acre, one acre, five acres or less. And us that are totally dependent on agriculture are already in the minority. And so if you set up a city, you have a mayor, you have council people who are elected, we are never gonna have a say. And we're gonna be told what we can do and what we can't do with our property. And I already, I have paid quite a sum in taxes over the years by what I have. And I don't need to pay anymore because all that work you're talking about, the roads, these trailers, these tracks. I am self-sustaining. I have never received one minute of care or concern from the county. Though I keep up over three quarters of a mile of driveway of my own, which the county told us years ago, no, we don't fool you unless you give us the right of way. I bought that property. I worked for it. I'm not giving nobody nothing. But I pay taxes on it and I pay for every piece of gravel that goes on three quarters of a mile. I just spent $2,700 just to maintain about a half a mile. So I don't wanna pay any more taxes. I want to be a good member of this community. I serve, I know there's, we've got quite a few, I can tell you a lot of years that we've served this community in fire service and working with EMS and the Sheriff's Department. Appreciate all those people do. And I'm about through, but one other issue. I live on Tugelo State Park Road and for some reason, from 328 to my driveway has become a dumping ground. It's a shame for people that I see tags from Florida, Indiana, Illinois, and they turn on that road. What kind of assumption do they draw from what they see? I have hauled off commodes, couches, dead dogs, dead deer, you name it, it's out there. And if they wanna vote in alcohol sales in county, I only sell it in cans because I pick them up and... Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins.
And appreciate how you helped.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else wanna make your comment? Come on up.
Dwayne Harris, 950 Lake Shore Road, Martin, Georgia, Gumlock community. Believe it or not, I'm on a fixed income. I just retired, moved up here 27 years, 27 days ago. Here in a commissioner meeting, but Mr. Chair and commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to address you. My dad and I and family built a lake house in 72 up here. Look forward to retiring, done that, and moved in. So this is my community now and I appreciate being a part of it, wanna be a good part of it. But I'm not sure of the services that we're not already receiving that incorporating Gumlock is gonna provide for us. So although we can qualify for grants and other things to help improvement, the grants don't allow you to use that for funding of your city council and mayors and your police. And we got a volunteer fire department that's been great. I see them all the time. I used to be the state fire marshal for the state of Georgia. So I know they do a great job. Just wanted to say that I'm not sure robbing Peter PayPal is gonna work. So we're against it. Family's against it. And that's really all I can say. I look forward to being a part of this community and enjoying it, but I'm just moved out of the big city of Atlanta and I didn't wanna come into something like this and here I come.
I was walking in town the other day in La Bona and I passed your dad's house, I think lots in my, he told me that you had just moved here.
Yeah, so you know, I lost my mom, but she's proud of us to be here and I look forward to working with everybody and seeing everybody and being part of this community and helping where I can, but I don't think this is what we need. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Harris. Anyone else like to make a comment? Come on up.
Thank you. My name's John Poole, I live at 506 Cedar Street, which is Gumlock area, of course. My wife Susan and I live in a small house on the lake. The house was built 46 years ago by my dad. Three generations of my family have lived in it. My fear is that I might be the last generation that lives in it because my son's spent his career in law enforcement. I'm not sure he'll be able to afford the taxes on it when he's retired because I barely can in my retirement. We certainly can't afford any more taxes. We don't need to be incorporated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Anyone else like to make a comment? Come on up.
I should've went first off, he said we hit her to all this stuff and everything. I don't have a lot to say, but I think I'm representing a lot of people in Gumlock. My name's Craig Jackson for the record, C R A I G Jackson, 426 Mountain View Road, Gumlock. But anyway, yeah, so I'm kind of against it, a lot of people are here, if we're making tally marks, I haven't seen much interest in it. But I do appreciate y'all's concern of we have problems in Gumlock, you know, what can we do? And I appreciate you thinking about us. And the roads and stuff, we do have a problem. I'll tell you what, I'm from Gwinnett County and it might sound kinda weird, but one of my dreams was actually one day to live on a dirt road. I did, I wanted to live on a dirt road. I would like to live on a dackon dirt road. I didn't know how bad my, I didn't know how bad my dirt road was gonna get, but it doesn't really bother me. I've got a fat four-wheel drive, I lock it in the hubs every morning, I go right up that hill. I feel sorry for the people that can't. And a lot of them are daredevils, they'll try it four or five times trying to get up that hill before they just realize they can't. But you know, the roads, we can get together and come up ways to do that. Same thing with the trash, the guys with the fence around, there's still this trash up here, I've seen a lot, barely heal hills. It's better than that, but I mean, we can, I've talked to that guy before. We can tell him we're not even gonna use you unless you do something like that, or you follow him, that boy ain't making enough money to pay for the fines. And another thing, if there's, if somebody throws a ring of paper in the trash can, instead of a bag, you can guess where it's gonna go, put the stuff in the bag. But that's another thing. But anyway, I'm totally against it, against that for right now. Anyway, I mean, I don't see much good coming out of it. I can't afford any more taxes. You pay my road or not, I don't care. It was dirt when I bought it, I got four-wheel drive, but you know, a problem with a crime, if I've used some more little help from the sheriff there. I started a Gumlock watch, a neighborhood watch, you know, it grew pretty good, so a lot of people are here. So that's one thing, is not to leave it up to everybody, to take care of, to help your own community. You know, I tell them, if you would just care enough to observe, if you could care, observe, and communicate, if you see something, say something. Learn the neighbor's name. I hook people up that have been living three houses away from each other for 12 years. They didn't even know their names. Well, we've got a good community and I kinda like the little community part. Like I say, I had a dream of living off a dirt road, my dream come true, thank you. But we do need some help, but you know, I think as citizens, we can also work together and not leave it up to the government. My thing is, I'll bet anybody, more government ain't the answer to stuff. And it's a little bit more help and take care of the community, we can come up with some ideas and throw it past you and I would say, that sounds good, or we ain't gonna do it, or whatever, at least we can. But I do appreciate your thinking about Gumlock and saying there are some problems there, what can we do? But incorporating, I don't think that's the right answer. But anyway, I think I speak for a lot of people that don't wanna go up here. Anyway, that's all I gotta say.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Come on up.
My name's David McKay, I live at 300 Poplar Springs Road, La Bona, Georgia, Gumlock community. Gentlemen, thank you for inviting us to this meeting tonight and listening to Ari and put into this, my husband and I have been living here for four years. I wasn't too sure about this community when we first moved into it, but I love this community and I love our neighbors. We are against incorporating Gumlock completely. If you gentlemen, as the commissioners for our county, could do anything to help us, it would be to take care of the drug problem that's going on in our area. They moved from the Brittany Harbor area down below us on our road that you, as the county now maintains for us, which we were so grateful to get that taken care of. You all do a great job of maintaining that road, I have no complaints with that. But the traffic in and out of that road, since people have moved down that road, I'm talking about day and night, 24 hours a day. Cars come in, they're not down the road five minutes and they're back out.
What was, I'm sorry, what was the name of your road again?
I live on, I live at the corner of Poplar Springs Road and Chandler Place Drive.
Chandler Place, okay.
We have had several conversations with the Sheriff's Department about this area, this particular property. And there has been some people checking on it and keeping an eye on things. But I'm telling you, an unmarked car sitting in my driveway could do a whole lot to catch cars in and out of there. And I'm talking about, they start about 11 o'clock at night and it goes on till 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. This incorporating Gumlock, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wanna make a comment? Come on up. Guys, if you can, please hold it down so we can hear.
I'm Gail Ellis, 412 Riverden Road, Gumlock. We bought our property in 1968 and we started building in 1972. And in 1974, we packed up our children and moved to Franklin County, put them in school. My boys grew up in the woods, finding stills, having the best time. I have to tell you about a gentleman that lived out there and I said, you know, the boys were out in the woods and they found a still and it's warm. And I said, but I told him not to go back there again and he said, good idea. I guess what I wanna say is, I know you have a tough job. And if you could get somebody to be able to enforce the laws, get rid of the blinded areas, the abandoned trailers, a lot of, a lot of druggies go in and out of those trailers. And she's right, the traffic going up and down our Poplar Springs, down towards the boat ramp, and it may be the same way over at the Franklin County Boat Ramp. But if we can see it and we can identify different things, you know, it shouldn't be too easy, too hard to straighten that up. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Anyone else have a comment to make?
Mr. Brady, you wanna go ahead?
No.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Terry Robertson, 64 Mountain View Drive, La Bona, Georgia, Gumlock. First off, I'd like to thank y'all gentlemen for having us. I'd like to thank Kyle for coming with us last night, too. It was a very good meeting, very educational. I'd like to start out on the trash. Everybody's pretty much, it explains the trash problems. I showed pictures, evidence to Kyle last night that I followed the gentleman. We got four or five of them. If we would put licensing on these people, make them have a licensed garbage truck to operate, that's the first step. The second step is, we got all these people coming from over in Dakota going to the plants in Harwood. Now, I could say half of these people pick up trash. When you find them Sonic cups and bags, yeah, and Arby's, where they coming from, okay? And we're not talking, we could, I guarantee you, we could fill this room up with 328 and Poplar Springs and Tugelo State Park Road, we could fill this room up, okay? We gotta have some help. We have really, citizens getting out here cleaning, y'all mentioned in the paper the other day, we already doing. If we didn't do that, it would look like land being. I mean, there are a lot of people that are retired that get out here and try to keep their town huge, but we need some, okay?
What about Gerard Road, Terry?
Yeah, Gerard Road, yeah. The next thing is, we do not wanna be incorporated. We talked with Kyle on that last night. The survey y'all did, a lot of us feel like it was sort of biased because there wasn't an option for it, you could say, we don't wanna be incorporated. The line that says pick one through three, it kinda was leaned towards, but we just, we won't... We don't need to be spending money on surveys, having, you know, companies do surveys. We need infrastructure in Gum Log. Gum Log has been the black sheet of the county for 20 years. Infrastructure hasn't been placed up here, okay? When, when the 328, when Gum Log Road, they come down to Stevens County, they wind the road six inches on each side, they pave it, they stop at the Franklin County line, they don't do nothing. We have all these people getting on 85, coming down through here, putting our families' lives in danger with these wide roads, okay? There is a lot of income that comes into this county through recreation, okay? We need to figure out how to help the citizens who live in these areas that generate this income. We have been the black sheet, we need y'all's help on this. We tried, we talked with Derek, and I appreciate the meeting we had with him, with the gentleman who was the engineer for the county. We tried to talk to him about our roads, okay? He keeps saying, "They cut our budget back, they cut our budget back." But yet they go two roads over that is derelict trailers, that we've been begging to have torn down on Valley View, okay? And a soul live on that road, am I right, ladies and gentlemen? We heard one part-time people there, one part-time. They come in there a month ago, and they put gravel six inches deep from one, it's a horseshoe-type road, goes from Poplar Springs to Poplar Springs. Dump gravel, put it out, but we can, oh, we got a half a load three weeks ago on our road. A half a load. And we go talk, they say, "Well, our budget cut..." Somebody needs to be looking at our road department. We need to have better supervision of our road, whoever's in charge of our road department, we need to be looking at them, okay? When you got four guys riding around in a pickup truck, and one motor grader, or one bush hog, and, and, what is really astonishing is, on Saturday afternoon, at 5 o'clock, you look up, and you got a bush hog, county bush hog, coming up your road, and you got four guys in a pickup truck on a Saturday afternoon, you wonder, "Are we paying overtime for this?" So these, I, I know the citizens out here, especially us being retired, we get still a lot more than y'all do.
No, thank you, go ahead, if you can wrap it up right quick, that was a timer. Okay, thank you. Zero one up, come on, come on up, Ms. Love.
My name's Robert Lally, better known as Bob. 249 Mountain View Drive, Gum Log Community, Levonie. Like the lady said just a little bit ago, so there she is. We bought first property here in 1968, my dad. When I got back from across the pond, over to my country in Vietnam, we started a cabin. And we built that cabin, and finished it in 75, and then dad decided that he wanted to retire here full-time and leave. So, they passed away in 16 and 17, 32 years here. Promised several times that we would be paid. And like I said, it's about our infrastructure and, and, uh, it just seems like Gum Log is in a time warp or something, you know? When Mr. Price had the only store down there, Mr. George Price, thank God, bless his soul, wonderful man. People like Miss Mary Whitworth, who has a wonderful farm out close to us. We've been fighting with some folks, putting in double wides in our community, that been sitting and sitting and sitting and sitting, not put together, not on the foundation, not anything else. And it's not that I don't like a double wide, just kinda be in the same price range with the rest of the homes. Goes all the way down that street and that curve, those homes are $300,000 to $500,000, my mine's not worth that. But, but anyway, anytime we could have some help with the infrastructure, and like Terry just brought up about the gravel on the road, we have three school buses that fly down that road every day. Now, I noticed lately, and I think somebody just finally said something to them, hopefully, they've slowed down a little bit. But fortunately, we don't have any children, but everybody has their pets and stuff, and, well, we do have three kids around the corner there, because that's one of the three buses, that's one in each different school. And coming down, Terry, if I may use this house as an example, and my brother-in-law Larry, who spoke earlier at 2:11, that was my mom and dad's home. When they come down that hill, naturally, what brakes they are using, if it's raining, just gouges out. Right, starting with Terry's house, right before you get to Mary's house, and just beyond my house, I mean, Ron Langston lives on the other side of me, State Line docks. They hit those worn-out places so hard, that sometimes the front wheels come off of school buses. We have called and called, my wife, who is a retired corporate banker out of Atlanta, she has a little more guts than I do, and knows who should call better than I do, I guess. But anyway, she, she has talked to everybody, superintendents to the school, the Board of Education, dah 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 dah. These guys just don't slow down. And the dust is taller than the 60 and 70-foot pine trees that's grown up over those 32 years. I mean, it's terrible, it really is. And I understand they have a schedule, you know, but for safety's sake. And I'm also retired law enforcement myself, and corporate law enforcement. But anyway, so, it's an unsafe environment for the road, for the people, because most of the people on that road, and I will be 70 in July, their mates are older, they back out, wham. You know, you got a serious, serious, serious lawsuit on your hands. It's reckless endangerment, that's a Georgia law, you can look it up in the COGS. Too fast for conditions, that one's in there too. And we could go on about that, but anyway, we need, we do appreciate you, do appreciate. I've known this rascal a few years, he does keep my dogs and cats alive, him and Pat. But, uh, had the opportunity to have a conversation with Mr. Turner, glad he's here with us. But I'm against it, my wife's against it, my five dogs and six cats are against it. Because they like being in the country too. So, that's pretty much all I gotta say, but the infrastructure is an issue. And we know, you know, the county's limited in funds, all these people know that. But we're limited in funds too, so any help we can get. And the drug issue, I shared with Randy Shirley from '09 to '12, brought in. Belgian Malinois, drug dog that belonged personally to me, trained in four drugs. You know how many times we get a drug bust whether in those four years?
Alright, thank you, Ms. Love, appreciate it. Anybody else wanna make a comment? Come on up.
Susan Cole, 506 Cedar Street, Levonie. As of tomorrow, my husband and I will have been permanent residents up here for 15 years. We've been coming here since 1974, when his parents built our house. We've lived during our 55 years of marriage, we've lived in three other states, and more recently, two other counties in Georgia. We've almost never lived within a city limit, we've lived within a county, and we've had county services. We've had roads with sidewalks, we've had sewage and garbage collection, we've had police protection, fire departments, and natural gas service. But we don't have all of that here. And I do understand, because we are in a rural area, why some of those aren't provided. And I understand that the huge amount of taxes we pay largely goes for education. Pays teacher salaries, and then the county staff salaries. I think that's probably the biggest part of the budget. But when you say you can't afford the infrastructure that other counties throughout the state, and others, this state, and other states do provide, well, why not? But on the other hand, the things that you couldn't control are blight and junkyards. Please, address some of those issues. Our village rate, we've had property, most recently in Cherokee County, and we still have some in Elkhone County. And our village rate here in Franklin County is right between the village rate in those other two counties. So, the services that I previously mentioned, we've had in these other counties. I've always wanted to live in the country, I'm glad I do. I don't want my husband to pave our driveway, because I like living in the country. Other places we lived, we, we had a lake in South Carolina that had alligators. Well, you know what, the gators were there first, and we didn't demand that the county take them away. Same with chicken houses, I love the farmers. I, I'd love to live on a farm if they didn't live on a lake, so please, don't let us run y'all out. But, um, you know, I do wanna say, I love living here, and I don't ever wanna go back to a municipal area. So I am opposed to incorporating Gum Log.
Guy Parker, 330 Panley Road, Commerce. I have a commercial break, okay, we'll change the subject, is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Our road, just out from my house, quarter mile down my road is Panley Road, it's a half a mile dirt road. It connects 326 on one side, come around the dirt road, past my house, and past my father-in-law's house, and it hits Hudson River, so that little half-mile dirt road is cutting off a paved corner of Hudson River and 326. It's been that way, I've been here since 2000, and my father-in-law's here, it's been that way longer than that. And for years, it's been fine, many years, it's been fine. With the advent of Google, and, you know, Maps apps, app-to-maps and all that, things have changed dramatically. We have folks cutting through that dirt road, uh, all the time. Big trucks, passenger vehicles, pickup trucks, and trash flying out the back end. There's a family on that dirt road that rent, and they have two or three little ones, and the cars just literally fly through that dirt road, bottles of wine, if they even bother, when they could just go up to the hardball, you know, and turn the left on Hudson River Church Road. I suppose, many, many times it is the GPS that's taking them through there. Or we would see so many delivery vehicles and that kind of thing. So I would like to see that one end of that road blocked off. I own a coffee business that's on, on that road, my father-in-law's pulpit business. My wife's cousin has a business that machines parts on that road. Other than that, we have one renting family, too, on either end of the road. And we'd like to see one end of that closed off, and maybe, you know, so folks can just pull up that corner and turn. That's all I got, thank you.
Okay, thank you, mister. Anyone else wanna make a comment? Come on up.
Keith Farne.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was motioning, but whichever one of y'all wanna...
Who's on up here with wet the head on?
Okay.
4418 Gum Log Road.
Sorry, I didn't see you there, Keith.
Which little community, like Gum Log, whatever, what's paid the most taxes, could I ask?
I, I can't rank, I mean, I don't have that in front of me, I don't, I know Gum Log, especially Lake Park, pay a lot of taxes.
Well, then I'm a feeble, if y'all wanna throw us to the side, I can keep our money, and that's starting up the sale. I don't want anything to do with it. I don't want what comes with it. First road to pay, big major.
You can give them. Guys, everybody be quiet so we can hear, please.
Thomasson, 295 Poplar Springs Road. Gum Log, proud to say. I've lived in Franklin County all my life, born here, raised my family here. Made my living in the Gum Log area practically all my adult life. Try to keep it clean, I'm a farmer, I raised cattle, try to keep the farm clean. There's a lot of things about living in the country that I try to be a steward there. The Gum Log Fire Department will be one of the victims, as funds will be cut, because there'll be money that's cut from that fire department, just like it does for the, um, other cities in the county. The funds they get now will be cut in half. And I don't wanna see that happen, by thinking that a city could support that. Concerning the fire department, these roads that we've been talking about, I served in the Gum Log Fire Department for 31 years, retired out of there now. And some of the roads that, let me put a footnote in here now. These roads that's there in Franklin, we had commissioners back then. So these things have been allowed by the commissioners to take place. It's an unfortunate situation for the people that live there, as well as the county. It's, it's a challenging situation to deal with these roads now, but that's where we are. And I don't wanna see the burden conveniently be... And you said, "Look, address our statements to you."
Uh-huh.
I'd appreciate it.
I am, I'm right in what you say, so I'm listening, go ahead.
Alright. I would like you to maybe take into consideration, instead of looking at ways maybe that these citizens can pay more to deal with these things. The county's in a position to deal with it. It's challenging, I don't have all the answers. But, don't look at the community as we're the problem, there's a lot of problems there, and excuse yourself or the county government from what it allowed to take place all these years. So I'd ask you to look a little bit more on that side of the table, instead of this side of the room, to flip the bill for this stuff. So I guess you know by now, I'm opposed to Gum Log being a corporate. I've never lived in any city limits, and I don't want to start now.
Anyone else who have comments? Anybody? Mr. Bridges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Thomas Bridges, 295 Bridges Road. Well, I'm here today, no, no. But the city has a Gum Log, but I don't have a vote.
Mr. Bridges, you need to turn around and face the board.
Sure. We have other issues that we need to address also. And this is the third time I've addressed the board members about this issue, and it's concerning the airport. On March the 30th, I came to the work session, and I tried to explain to the commissioners that things wasn't done proper and correctly about getting a forensic bid on the airport. We all agreed to have a bid. So, the last meeting I had was December 15th, a joint meeting between Hart County and Franklin County. I went down to that meeting, and we came away with this. This is in the minutes of January 2nd. Airport forensic audit. Board discussed the need for a financial reporting for the airport authority. Commissioner West made a motion for the Franklin County to place a request to solicit a bid for a forensic audit. Bid would be needed, give a three-year, five-year, or a seven-year to the auditors, and let them bid on whether on a price that takes three years, five years, and seven years. We passed that as a board, board member, myself, 5-0. Hart County did the same thing. Basically, I attended the March 25th meeting of the Joint Commission, just to see how that went, and how many, how much was the bids and so forth. And I came in and I noticed that they had placed the three, five, and seven years and put dates on them. They put them from 18 down to 12, 14 down to 18, and 16 up to 18. I was stunned to see that. Because, gentlemen, hopefully you're certified. It takes 60 hours, real time, to go get certified by the Georgia County Commissioners of Georgia. You don't make a motion to take a bid and then later put out the bid with dates on it. Now, I was told that I did not listen to the tape and I was wrong. But, I'm right. Because the minute shows that we did not put a date on it, we just asked them for the three, five, and seven. And when we got the bids, the bid was sent out was asking for certain dates. Now, why is that important? It's important because we had the hangar switch in 2019 and we had the GBI report in 2020. And the report was turned over to the DA. The DA gave us a letter stating that we need to clean up and dismiss the chairman of the airport. And three out of five of us voted to do that. If we didn't do that, the DA was going to take us to the grand jury. But nevertheless, we broke the rules when we put dates on it. And you left off 19 and 20. You included the dates down at the low end, 11 and 12. Ruston and Associates had done a forensic audit, thoroughly audited through 2007 up to 2013, I believe it was. And from then on, we were just doing a financial report of the airport. And the one that was done in 18 and 19 showed a $3,000 shortage in the fuel. $106,000 was spent on fuel, only brought in $103,000. Gentlemen, I'm going to leave some questions with you. And hopefully, you'll fill these questions out. These questions are simply, are you certified to be our commissioner in the county 20 to 60 hours? Are you certified commissioner? Could you ask that you listened to the tape?
That's all the time you have, Mr. Bridges. Thank you. Appreciate it. If you'll leave those questions with the clerk.
And I'm going to hand these to you if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Boy, when you have your five minutes go quick.
Mr. Becker. Thank you. Mr. Callan. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who had, would like to make a public comment? You can come on up.
Martha Danza, 5858 Alamo Road, Martin.
B-A-N-T-A. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. The only thing I'm going to address is I've heard rendering plant tossed around. And I don't know how many people have ever smelled the rendering plant. And I grew up in Washington DC, Georgetown, and for years, until I moved away in 1972, there was a rendering plant right there, which was about, as a crow flies, two miles from the White House. There was a rendering plant. And for the life of me, and I was just a kid, 13 years old, and I used to wonder, somebody is in someone's back pocket to have this rendering plant because it's a disservice to say it smelled bad. It stank to high heavies. And so, anybody that talks about a rendering plant, they really have no concept of the Pandora's Box that you might be opening. There is not a single chicken farm that will ever come close to the smell. The stench. And I've not, and I live right across from one of the chicken houses down Gum Log, and I've never smelled the place. Scattered. I've never smelled the chicken farm. But I'm telling you, as far as a rendering plant, you truly just felt wanted. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
Vernon Hand, 333 Handley Road. I just wanted to do a follow-up on Mr. Parker's comments about Handley Road. Mr. Turner has all paperwork where everybody's got property on their sign, will be closing. The problem is, they throw the trash, a while back, there's about a dozen tires they threw out up the road. One time, there's about 30 something bags, gallon bags, or some kind of frozen food they thawed out of it and scattered that. But the road, nobody wants it, the problem is, they save a half, if they cut that little corner off, they save a half a mile to the normal round highway. But I mentioned it. And they don't save enough time because the time you go through the dirt road. In the end, we want to close off from the dirt road that's less than a mile to Madison County. And I'm guessing 95%, maybe, it's probably higher than that, people that cuts them through there is from Madison County. So, Franklin County is keeping that end of the road up for Madison County. And it's working out, too. And it's just not feasible. And none of us wants it. Everybody's, I'm saying, you've got all the paperwork, everybody's signed, you know, will close it. It's just benefiting Madison County. It would save the county some money not to have to keep that end up. So, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else like to speak? Oh, wait, you can't, you've already had a chance, I'm sorry. Have you already spoke? Okay. Yeah, you can't, you've only get one chance, I'm sorry. This crowd, anybody else? Anyone else like to speak? Okay, at this time, we're going to close public comment and move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item is the fiscal 2020 audit presentation. And our auditing firm for the county is Ruston and Associates, so they're here tonight to review that with us. So, if they'll come up. Let's pause for a second. If anyone does want to leave, you're welcome to. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay, but that way, we won't detract from their comments. Let's give it a time, though. Guys, if you're leaving, we're going to ask if you try to leave as quickly as possible so we can continue with the rest of the meeting. That's okay, we'll do it at the end. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You can go ahead.
Chairman, Commissioner, I'm Chris Hollifield. Sam Latimer with me today. Where we're resting, I just first say, we appreciate you.
Hang on, this one's sake. Will you close that door for us? Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, I appreciate you having us here to do the audit. We've been away for eight years and did the audit for many years previous to that. And I'm glad to be back. It's one of the places I've cut my teeth on, believe it or not, even though I'm 51 years old, it's been quite many years ago. You've got a fully bound report there in front of you. We're not going to spend a lot of time in that, actually no time in that, because I pulled some highlights out of there, but that's a good bedtime reading if you want to look at that. But I will say, we were hired in January, jumped right on the audit, got here timely, and, you know, have submitted that report to the Department of Audit. And we're looking forward, almost, we're about around to the next year to get going again. So, I'm just going to pull some, we've got a presentation here, I'm going to pull some highlights out of there. And the first one, we have three opinion letters in our audit. And even though we had some challenges working through the audit from a standpoint, I'll just say, everybody was very helpful in getting us everything we needed. But as we know, we had a change in personnel there as we were, you know, right before we were hired. And Beth did a great job getting everything packaged up for us. But trying to find things here and there, you know, was a little bit of challenge. We appreciate everybody's help and positive in that. But we've given a good, clean opinion on the financial statements. One of the three letters you'll see in the report from us is our audit opinion letter that talks about our responsibilities of the audit, your responsibilities of the audit. Even though we are helping prepare those financial statements, those numbers are your responsibility. Those financial statements are the county's responsibility. Our responsibility is to give an opinion on that so that the reader of the financials, anybody looking at those financials, can tell an independent CPA has looked at those and can place reliance on those. Okay? So, every month, I'm assuming you're getting some monthly reports and you're getting budget actual reports. You can see what departments are within budget, which ones are not. You can see what revenues came in, you can see what expenditures went out during the month. When we put these financial statements together, there's two statements in the report that pull all of your different funds of money together, all of your budgets together. So, you know, we have a general fund, we have a splotch, we have a water, we have the landfill, we have all these different funds that we're pulling together in this audit report and putting two statements, statement of financial position, the statement of activities. In business terms, that's like your balance sheet and your income statement for the county all funds combined. And for 2020, just a couple of numbers or a few numbers here I want to call your attention to. If you think about net assets of the county, so think about assets, everything the county owns, cash, all money that people owe us, all our infrastructure, our roads, our bridges, our vehicles, our equipment land, everything that we own, less our liabilities, everything that we owe. Okay? All our debt that we owe, any vendor payables that we owe, retirement that we owe, that type of thing. So, our assets, less our liabilities is our net assets. In a personal term, that would be like your net worth, if you will, of the county. And so, the net position is made up of three categories. Our net investment and capital assets, okay? So, that's our infrastructure, our capital items, less any accumulated appreciation, less any debt that we owe on that infrastructure. That's $42.7 million. That's the largest piece, of course. We have restricted net position, okay? A splotch is an example of restriction. We have to spend that by voter referendum that was approved. Can't just spend that on general budget for $4,873. And then we have less left, our unrestricted net position. Again, this is all funds combined with the county, almost $5.3 million unrestricted. And our total net position of those three numbers is 52, almost $52.9 million for the county. If you look at our revenues over our expenses for the year, $3.3 million. So, our revenues exceeded our expenses for the year full accrual basis, $3.3 million, all funds combined, okay? If we talk about the general fund, we're going to look at a few of our individual funds. So, our general fund, the main operating fund of the county, our revenues were $17.1 million for 2020. Our expenditures were $15.3 million, okay? So, if you look at these numbers, these numbers look pretty good for fiscal year 2020. If we look at our inter-fund balances, and you'll see in some of our management comments, this is one area I think we need to look at, we talked to Derek about this. We have some balances in the general fund that other funds owe. In other words, we've loaned those funds money out of the general fund over the years by not doing transfers over there. So, one is the 911 fund. We'll see here in a minute, the 911 fund is not self-supporting. There's not enough revenues coming in there to offset all of its expenditures. So, rather than transfer money over there, the general fund's just been supplementing that and building up this amount of balance that's owed back to the general fund that needs to be addressed or cleared out in some manner, because the 911 fund's not going to be able to repay all of that. Water and sewer fund, same thing. So, over accumulation of years, the general fund has basically loaned the water and sewer money, fund $3.2 million, okay? That's probably not going to get paid back with the margins that are in the water fund. So, that's something that Derek, we'll work with him on getting addressed. But as it says right now, those are assets in the general fund, meaning we're going to get paid back for those, but that's very doubtful that we'll get paid back, back into the budget from those two funds. But assuming that's the case, unrestricted fund balance is $10.8 million. So, again, in the general fund, assets, less our liabilities, equal our fund balance. And if you equate that to operations, how many months of operations do we have compared to our current budget? Well, that's a little over eight months. That's a good, healthy place to be. But if you back out those inter-fund balances that are probably not going to get paid, we're sitting at $4.2 million in about three months, okay? So, when you look at it that way, that's still a very good place to be. We usually recommend a minimum of fund balance in the general fund. Basically, these are reserves that we're carrying forward to the next year of three to four months, okay? It will be just a little bit over three months. So, I think we'll work with Derek in getting that addressed for this next audit on those inter-fund balances, okay? On the general fund, if you look at a five-year history here, if you look at the fund balance, you see, we've increased that significantly since 2016. So, we're moving in the right target. Some of that increase has been from the loan of the money that we are not really transferring over to supplement those other funds, but not all of it. You've done a good job over the last five years of creating more reserve, if you would, for the future in fund balance. You see, we've gone from a total fund balance of $4.2 million up to $11.5 in those five years. If we look at the water and sewer fund, so our operating revenue in 2020 increased over 19 by $657,000, okay? It's 42% increase in revenue. We had a very large industrial customer that was added in fiscal year 2020 that caused most of that increase. Also caused some of the operating expenses. They increased $462,000, about 28.6%. If you look at the revenue versus the expenses in that fund, our revenues exceeded our expenses in that fund by $183,000. So, the water fund is starting to generate some net income, if you will. But it probably, if you think about, we're generating $180,000 and we owe the general fund $3.2, probably not going to get that all paid back. It's too big a number, probably. Our inter-governmental revenue, that's the revenue you see in the water fund. For the wastewater treatment plant, that project sort of wrapped up, if you will, in fiscal year 20, so we didn't have quite as much of grant dollars and other money coming in through the water fund during '20 as we did in 2019, okay, the fund capital. We look at the solid waste. Much smaller fund, but we did have revenues increased by $3,858. Our expenses increased $2,453. If we look at this fund, our expenses were greater than our revenue in this fund, by $8,552, okay? So, we're a little upside down in this fund, so what fund supplements that, or do we have enough reserve to carry forward to offset that? And then a couple other, what we call major governmental funds, meaning they're larger than some of our other funds, emergency 911 fund. So, you see in fiscal year 20, our revenues were $440, almost $445,000, but our expenditures were $835, okay? So, really, the general fund is supplementing that budget, okay? So really, the general fund is supplementing that budget, okay? So going forward, we really need to, we actually, the county actually budgets for this transfer, but the money wouldn't really actually transfer. That difference, we really need to transfer over there. We're really gifting that over there to them to use part of their budget, not accumulating a loan balance like it'll ever be paid back, okay? And that's quite common. I don't know that we have any of our governments that the 911 fund pays for itself, okay? So that's quite common. We just need to make the transfer as we go, okay? In the splotch, the five fund, our total revenues, a little over $4 million. Most of that, of course, is splotch, a little bit of interest there. And then our total expenditures out of that fund, $3.581. That includes a little over $1 million that we sent to the cities of their portion, $863,000 of it for capital projects, and $1.7 million of fund debt service. You may remember, we issued bonds to advance fund some of those splotch projects, and now we're paying back some of that debt. And then we have five other, you know, smaller governmental funds that we're not really, they're in the report for us, but not going to present to you in this presentation. Mentioned we have three letters in here. The second letter that's in that bound report on pages 101 and 102, this is our report under government auditing standards. We're required to look at internal controls, we're required to look at compliance with your grant agreements, compliance with your legal agreements, compliance with state law. This is where you'll find some of our findings in there. So we have nine internal control deficiencies that we've reported in that letter, and we had one non-compliance finding related to budget in that. Those are also in a separate letter that you have a copy there that's issued separately from the financial statements. On slide 11, the third remaining letter from us is, anytime we have $750,000 of more that we receive in federal dollars, federal grant dollars, okay? Certainly with all the water projects that we've had going on, we've had ARC, we've had GFA, we've had all these funds coming in, we've exceeded that, okay? The CARES Act money is also federal dollars, too, but it'll be in next fiscal year, okay? So it'll create a singlet for sure for next year. But we have to have this extra layer of audit where we also look at internal control, how you handle those funds, just the federal dollars, and how you handle the compliance. Are you in compliance with the grant agreements? Did you do what you were required to? Did you submit the proper reports back and what you spent that money on? And we didn't have any findings or anything related to the federal dollars. We also have to submit up to the Federal Clearinghouse a copy of our report and list all of those federal grant dollars that we received. We'll be working to get that submitted here in the next few days. And then slide 12, just lets you know about a few things coming up. You may or may not be familiar, but you know, the Government Accounting Standards Board that we refer to as GASBIE in short, they set all the accounting policies that all governments must follow, all the accounting standards, the layout of those financial statements that are in that bluebound report, all those note disclosures that are required to be in there, how those are reported. Well, there's two new standards coming down. We'll be helping implement in 2021, one of them is GASBIE 84. How we handle reporting, we'll have a couple of new statements that'll go in those financials related to our fiduciary funds. And those, quite frankly, will be around most of your other agencies like Tax Commissioner, magistrate, probate, clerk of court, sheriff. They handle funds that come in and funds go back out, and how the financial statements will be laid out for those. So we'll be having to be working through that as we go into fiscal year 21 audit. And then GASBIE 87 is going to be a big change in fiscal year 22 for how we handle leases, okay? So right now, you could have two types of leases. You have your general, say, operating lease, meaning we lease space in a building, or we lease, you know, some of our wells for our water. I know we do that. We may have copier leases, things that we pay monthly rental amount that we're not actually owning the asset. We're not going to own it at the end either, okay? Those are operating leases. Those just go through our expenditures and our budget, okay? Then we also have this other bucket of capital leases. We go out and lease some sheriff vehicles and intend as those that we're financing a purchase there. When we get paid for paying that lease, that's at the end of five years, however long it is, we're going to own those vehicles. They're going to be the county's vehicles. Those are capital leases. Those get put on assets that we own, and then we have that lease amount as debt that we owe, okay? Well, this is going to change that for all governments. It's also going on in the private sector, too, with businesses, where that bucket of operating leases, where we're paying just a monthly rental amount and we're not owning those, if those leases are longer than 12 months, now they're going to be treated like lease capital. So we may not own that well that we're leasing. We might not going to own that copier that we're leasing. But now we're going to have a new type of asset that'll be on our balance sheet called a right-to-use asset. And the remaining value of those lease payments we're going to make over longer than 12 months will be new debt that'll be on there. I say all that, meaning that, you know, we're going to make sure that gets recorded correctly on the financial statements. But you can imagine of the work that might have to go into that just to make a list of all those leases and how we might handle those and what's out there and make sure we get them all accounted for properly. So that's a big, big change that'll happen for fiscal year 22. And that's our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, do you have questions? We appreciate that you guys did a great job in a very short timeframe. We appreciate that.
We put a team on, got it knocked out, and we appreciate you working with us.
We appreciate you working with us to help. That's a big job.
Terry should have been here. Terry, we had him pulling all kinds of stuff, you know, and everybody in the office. Secretary Terry was a big help. Let's do that along with everybody in the office. We'll be back at it before we know it here in a few months.
Okay. We appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. The next item on the agenda is the manager's report. So I'm going to turn this over to our county manager, Mr. Turner, to do the manager's reports, each item.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're just going to go through a couple of things real quick with the manager's report. Just, these are just a couple of updates, a couple of items that we have. We're just looking at personnel currently. Currently, we're still in, we're finishing the search for a couple of positions that are having impact to the operations, the marshal, and also the assistant maintenance technician. These had to be reposted due to lack of applicants on the first pass through this. So we had about a three-week period where we didn't have much of any applications coming through for this. But we did go back and repost this and broaden the search. So currently, with the assistant maintenance tech, we have six applicants that we'll be reviewing. And with the marshal, we have 47 total applicants that we'll be reviewing. So we are looking to move on these and get interviews scheduled and make a decision as quickly as possible so that we can't get the marshal back out in the field. All right, so I have to skip to survey results on the agenda. So this is just summing up the information that we kind of discussed as far as the surveys that we put on Facebook. First, we're looking at county alcohol sales. So since the county right now is listed as being a dry county, we are just getting an opinion on whether to put a referendum on this. So with the county alcohol sales, then in favor of, we had 80.6% that are in favor of county-wide alcohol sales. Against was 17.9%. No opinion, 1.5%. This survey had 548 participants. 92.9% of those were full-time residents. 80%, 80.7% live in the unincorporated area of Franklin County. Just an additional piece of information for county alcohol sales. Again, as you can kind of see, it's a little tough to see with this, but with the green and the red that are located on this sheet, this is ACCG's reporting of the dry and wet counties. And with that, you can see that's about, that first red line that you see there is Franklin County. And that's listed as no across the board for any type of alcohol sales. So this is looking at sales by licenser. So do you issue any kind of alcohol license would be the first thing that this is going to be asking. Is there any on-premise sales of beer and wine allowed? Is on-premise consumption of distilled spirits allowed? And is off-premises consumption of beer and alcohol, beer and wine allowed? Also, is off-premise consumption of distilled spirits allowed? Also, the final one says, are Sunday sales allowed? So with that, we're a no across the board for each of those descriptors. And basically, what this means in terms of how the county is viewed, even though we do have alcohol sales within the city, as far as the county is concerned, is viewed as being a dry county. So with alcohol sales, with this being a little bit more favorable, then I would recommend that the board look at proceeding with any further action towards this. Further action would be a vote on a resolution to hold a referendum. And we can look at what the dates of that would mean in the future, but no decision has to be made to date for that. But I think this would be an opportunity for the county. As we're looking at that, I guess the biggest highlight of how that's viewed would be that as you have restaurants or other businesses that may have the need for an alcohol license, they're going to bypass Franklin County because of our designation as a dry county. So this would just be an opportunity to take a look at that. Any questions to the alcohol sales?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
All right, this is just information reviewing the gumlog incorporation topic that we've been discussing tonight. So with this one, we had, I was pretty tight on this, 46.4% being in favor, 44.7% being against, and 8.8% being of no opinion. 65.4% of respondents in this were gumlog residents. There's no further information on this topic, but I would probably say that we can pause on this to get further discussion for the commissioners and also whenever other commissioners have returned on what action would be. Any questions on the gumlog?
Any questions?
I know this is going to be a little bit tough to see with the screen. Sorry for the small print. But basically, this is just looking through the revenues through the period. I know that it's a little bit tough to read exactly what that says. For everybody that hasn't been to a meeting, hadn't seen this graphic before, this is essentially looking at year-over-year comparison. So basically, with the blue, the blue, the orange, and the gray color, FY '19, FY '20, and FY '21. And this is just giving a display of what those look like through period nine. Period nine being through the end of March. So essentially, with, when we're looking at any of the financials, it's not necessarily a comparative analysis, year-over-year per se, of them being exactly even, but it's more of an interest to see to gauge exactly where we are from the standpoint of are we reaching the mile marker so period nine, do we want to be at 75% of our budget attained? So you can see from this, we had a little bit better year revenues-wise at this point last year, FY '20 year. So we're just a little bit down for, through period nine, for the current year, but we're still on track to still hit the budget. So the overall budgetary number, we're still at about 74%.
What areas, I mean, what are the major areas where revenue is down, do we know?
Looking through, practically all taxes have been collected. So it's not in taxes. It's a little bit more, we're talking about water being down a little bit more than anything. Again, kind of like we talked about with the last meeting, it's hard to pinpoint exactly what that is, but I'd probably say a little bit comes from some of the COVID and being not as out and about with something. So having a higher revenue last year due to people sometimes being home more would be one potential cause of why last year's was higher, or so much higher than even the prior year to that, and then down versus this year. So same type of graphics, so FY '19, '20, and '21 listed. So you're looking here at revenues, you do generally want to see these either stay flat or see a decrease in these. And what you can see with looking year-over-year, of course, if you have a little bit higher revenue as we did with FY '20, that usually is going to incur a little bit more expense, just the cost of operating to produce those revenues. We are actually down this year considerably with the, or sorry, with the expenditures for this year versus last year, but that would probably correspond to with a little bit lesser revenue. So we're still on track for where we need to be revenues. So typically, just like the auditors have kind of reviewed, we trend to spend less than what our revenues are. So we're still on pace for that currently. All right, I have just a couple of items of note with retreat follow-up that we're just looking at. So just like Scott Delory talked about with planning and zoning, planning and zoning is still moving forward with an overall review of county ordinances. This is going to be important to take the time to review these. So throw a review if the county needs any adjustment to that. I know that it's been several years since we've had that type of review and any adjustments made to those ordinances. It doesn't necessarily mean that ordinances as a whole just change automatically, but what we'd want to do in a lot of cases with ordinances is just take a review of those to see if situations within the county have changed or if there's changes that need to be made towards those to fit whatever our goals are. So we would be looking at UDC to just, that unified district, to try to make sure that we are following that, make sure that we're current on what needs to happen, make sure that we're current on what corresponds to our future goals. Next topic on there is the building and land acquisition. So the county manager, as we talked about with the retreat, is, the county manager will proceed in investigating whether the old Karnesville Elementary School is a worthwhile investment for the board, as looking at this as an opportunity to bring the government under one building. So of course, we would still have a couple of areas that would still remain separated. So you'd still have the shares in jail, of course. But this would be looking to unify and bring under one building the good bulk of the rest of the county. So we are still in progress with that. We've got an assessed value. We actually just walked today to start working to see what it would take as far as internet, any of those type of services within that building. And we'll start working on trying to evaluate the cost of any repairs and then any upgrades to make the building livable for us to inhabit. So that, we actually just had that meeting today. So we'll come back with another follow-up, probably in about another month or so. Looking at healthcare, met with our healthcare broker. So we're looking at various options for healthcare for the upcoming fiscal year. Typically, with healthcare costs, those are going to increase generally about 6% year-over-year. That'd probably be about your average when you're talking about the increase in healthcare costs. You know, we do have situations where our annual increase is projected a little bit higher just due to claims that we do have. So we are looking at options as far as whether we do need to change with Cigna or whomever we may need to go to. So we have about three options on the table that we can review and go to. Like I said, the average cost of healthcare increases by about 6%. A renewal right now with Cigna would run for us about 18% as an increase. Also, we're going to look at other options that can mitigate that cost increase, but not sacrifice any of the value that the employees and staff get from their healthcare coverage. All right, and then finally, with this topic, the government media. So we talked about just making sure that we're connecting with our citizens, and we do definitely appreciate everybody having the opportunity to come out tonight. So the county Facebook has been just a wealth of information for the citizens and board staff. Of course, with myself being kind of front and center, I don't have the opportunity to physically go out and meet with every single citizen that's in the county, of course. But this is an opportunity with Facebook that we're able to get information out to citizens and make sure that citizens are aware of what's going on or what we're doing, what we're working on. Of course, one of the topics that we have had is just usually something weekly that we're talking about. Something we'll have eat and meet with the county manager starting this Friday. So we want to just take those opportunities to make sure that we can talk to the citizens and make sure that they are current on anything that we are working on. Because of course, we only have the one, you know, the two meetings a month. So there's a little bit spread in between, so things do happen. And we want to make sure that everybody is aware of what's going on. Final topic that I have with that, and they actually spoke a little bit earlier, and you have this in your packet, was from Mr. Vernon Hanley about roads. So this is a, so with them speaking tonight, that's a road abandonment request that they have, as he mentioned, closing off the end of a road. And I won't repeat everything that they've talked about a couple of times up there, but just with issues with trash cut through and having issues such with that road of looking to close off one end of that. So it is something that we can do and is at your discretion to have, to move forward on. So it, it is something that we can do and is at your discretion to, to have, to move forward on. We don't necessarily have to vote on that happening tonight. Just, we could always still wait until the other commissioners are here on Monday and then just bring this back up for a vote on, on Monday's meeting. If you want to do that.
I think that's important. A few years ago, we had a request, we haven't had that many to close roads, but we had a request to close Strawberry Lane. And the reasons seemed sound and we went through the process and we advertised and we closed the road. And immediately there was a huge public uproar and we realized very quickly more people used that road and it, there were some valid reasons to keep it open and so we had to reverse our decision. And I, I understand the reasons they're asking us to close it and I'm, I'm fine with that. But I wonder if we just need to, to put this out for a public comment period, let people call in or on social media and tell us whether or not they, just so we've had a chance to hear from everybody, because people don't always show up at the meetings before we make a decision and then hear that people, you know, that there might have been legitimate reasons that we didn't consider. Just, you know, maybe a month. What do y'all think about that? And just let people, and then if nobody comments, then I feel better about us moving forward with that. Does that sound reasonable? And that would give the other commissioners time to kind of digest that too, the two that aren't here.
Right. And, and I do caution whenever we're looking at any road closures that we do want to make sure we're making that evaluation because it is hard to go back, close a road, it's not maintained and then there's something that happens to where we need to reopen a road or take that road back. So we do want to make sure we're being careful about that and make sure we're really evaluating what those roads look like for us. That's just some information that he had kind of mentioned before about who they are, what they operate within that road. This is an actual picture of Frontview Public of that area. So I think I have a pointer on this. But you can see from the, the red section up there, so that's Hanley Road that you can kind of see. You can kind of make that out on the far right where the red is. That's Hanley Road there. The red is the area that they're asking to have closed. So you can see Hudson River there at the bottom and what that would do. So from Hudson River going to State 326, State Route 326, you can see where he's kind of talking about this is the cut through that they make going on Hanley Road instead of going all the way to 326 to then make. So that's just a visual of what the, of what that means. You have that in your packet, but for everybody out here viewing, this is what that means. So, so it does, it is something worth just considering, but we can't put it out there for a public comment to make sure that people are okay with that and it's not some unknown use to the road that we don't know about.
And we should, I don't know, maybe there's a way we can ask when people provide a comment, are you a Franklin County resident or Madison County resident? So we can sort out in those comments, you know, because we need to look at what Franklin County says. If that makes sense. And a month would give our staff more time to thoroughly go out there and look at that and evaluate it and make sure we're not, that we're not missing anything.
Right. Yeah, and we, and we can separate that comment to make sure that we're notating where they're from. Make sure that it is Franklin County versus Madison County or probably other, just in case there's that there so we can delineate from the different areas or people are driving through. We just want to make sure that we are doing, you know, what's best, of course, for the county residents in particular. But, you know, talking to Mr. Hanley and the family, then they do feel like it's a lot of more Madison County is what they suggested. And probably is, I don't know that as being a fact unless we had cameras there or something of that nature. But that's, you know, likely what the, what the case could be.
And we need to think about, I, I don't think it probably would, but make sure that it's not an issue with law enforcement and 911 fire if that road suddenly closed. I don't think it would be, but we can ask those questions to, if we haven't already.
Yeah, and if there were, the, the one thing for that road that we could look at is it would take a little bit of widening and make sure that there's an area for them to turn around. So if you have, say, a 911 or some of the larger type of vehicles that needed to come down that road, we have, we would have to make sure that we're building it in a way, if it's closed off, that they can turn around and get out. So that's one issue that you sort of have as you're looking at some of these roads.
And I, I think he said that maybe there are no schoolchildren or was there, were there any kids on school buses going down there?
Right, yeah. So, so as far as anybody that lives on the road, there's no schoolchildren. So that would be something that we don't have right now. Obviously that could change in future generations or whatever the case is.
Right. How do y'all feel about, does that sound okay?
Yes, that sounds good.
How would they block it off, just with concrete barriers or how, how would you stop the road off?
Yeah, and we'll have to work with the engineer to see exactly what might be the best way to make sure there's no damage or anything like that that would come from it. But probably would be something more of some form of a barrier that we could put there. Then we would still have to do, like I said, a little bit of work to make sure we build in something that they have enough room to turn around.
And we're, we're still, I mean, we would be still considering it's a county road, we're just closing off one end.
That's right.
The other situation, we totally abandoned it theoretically to the property owners.
Right, yes.
So that's a little different.
Yeah, so this would still be a county road, so we just would have the one entryway in, for maintenance. But, but we can get, we can get a survey up here in the next few days and have that run for a while to get some more, some more feedback from the citizens.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions, Mr. Turner?
And that wraps, that's a wrap for me.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay. The, the next item on the agenda are announcements. Mr. Turner, back to you. Do you have any announcements?
No, I think the only, just addition to the auditors coming is that they've done a great job for us that we'll be working with them, continuing to work on them, you know, just getting the information that they need. There's just some things that we'll have to work through and, you know, a little bit behind on, like you mentioned. But they're going to help us also too, some training so we can make sure that we have the information in the way that they need it. Because one, not an issue necessarily, but as you get to changing auditors is that you do change what they like to see and how they like to report it. And it's not that it's, it's not that they're doing something wrong in those cases, but it's more about their opinion. It is an opinion. So just everybody understanding that changing one auditor, they have a different opinion from another auditor. So we're going to be working to sort of change the way we're doing some things to make sure we're fitting with how these auditors need information.
Right. And an important point to that is we are, because we were behind, part of it due to COVID with fiscal year 2020, or 2019, which was only completed in December, they've done 2020 right up through to now, from January to now. So there are only two months left in fiscal year 21. So despite any changes we make, many of the saying, there could be issues that we're going to show up with next year's audit because there's just not time yet to, to fully change gears.
Right. We would typically need to have made corrective changes in those last six months for them to give us credit for having corrected an issue. So like you mentioned with any of those procedural issues, we've only had two months. So we'll have another audit for the fiscal year 2021, the current year that we're in that ends June 30th. They'll be back here in about September, October for the next audit for fiscal year 2021. The one they reported on is fiscal year 2020, but we won't have time to really make quantity, you know, any tangible corrective actions. It'll just be things that we can do for next year, but things that they won't give us credit for because it'd only be two months. Instead of, the standard is about six months that they would give us that credit.
Okay. Any other announcements?
No, that's it.
All right. Just a couple of announcements. The board is going to meet next Monday, May the 3rd. There'll be a public hearing at 5:30 and that's for zoning issues that are current. And then also a regular board meeting at 6:00 PM. And both of those meetings will be here at the Justice Center. Today, the Health Department held a COVID-19 vaccination clinic at Rocky Ford Gym. And so we want to thank everyone who helped with that. They sent out emails asking for, for volunteers and a lot of people came and helped. A second dose clinic for those folks will be held on Tuesday, May the 18th, and that's from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Rocky Ford Gym. This past week was Administrative Appreciation Week and on behalf of the board, we want to thank all of our office and administrative staff in every department across the county. We appreciate all the hard work that each of you provide to the county and of course, most of them are not here, but we want to thank them nonetheless. The county is going to have a gym dedication ceremony at the Rocky Ford Park and this is to honor the naming of our gym in memory of Michael Mayfield Senior. We voted on that earlier this year and so we've already renamed the gym, but we're going to have a ceremony to mark that occasion on Saturday, May the 15th, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And this will be a community-wide event. There'll be food and we want to invite everyone to come and participate. And that's all I have. Commissioner Wester, do you have any announcements? Mr. Foster? Okay. Hearing none, it's, they're motioning at this time to adjourn.
I'm making a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester's made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster's seconded the motion. All in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. The motion will carry 3 to 0 and we stand adjourned. So thank you to everyone for being here tonight.